Let me call the meeting to order, and thank you for joining us this evening. This is a regularly scheduled City of Greer Council meeting. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilmember Lee Dumas if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then an invocation for council. If you'll please join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray.
Heavenly Father, thank you so much for another night that we get to come here together as a council and to lead the City of Greer. We specifically thank you this night for our new city administrator, Andy Merriman, and we're just going to pray that he's going to be an outstanding leader for our city. And we ask that you keep your hand on his life and on that of his family and on the staff that is going to be working for him, look forward to working with him. God, go with us tonight. We know there's a lot going on in the world right now with COVID that's going on and with the tragedy in Beirut, and there's just, there's a lot of things on a lot of people's mind right now and a lot of fear. And we ask that you give us courage, strength, wisdom, and guidance as we go to do your will. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Dumas. Well, as Mr. Dumas has mentioned, the newest member of this lineup is Mr. Merriman, who joins us for his first council meeting with us, and we are sure for many, many, many more. And I want to thank you for all your work over the last couple of weeks here as you've started to get settled in and learn rotes a little bit and learn some names. And thank you for accepting this position. As the councilman said, we look forward to working with Mr. Merriman and utilizing a new set of eyes and a new set of skills that he brings to this position. And we thank you, sir, for your service to us. So with that, Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
We'll move then to the minutes of the council meeting you have contained in your packet to July 28th, 2020 minutes. I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
So moved.
And a second. Any items of note for the clerk this evening? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we will move to the administrators' report. Mr. Merriman, the floor is yours, sir.
Sit back. I've got a lot to talk about. I've had a lot of experience here, and so, no, honestly, the only thing I really wanted to say tonight is I had an opportunity over the last week and a half to work with some of the department heads on a very specific and pointed approach to what it is they do just for me to learn the ins and outs of the departments. They've been tremendously helpful. I think I've hit everybody. I've got Ms. Helms tomorrow, Mr. Grant on Thursday, and I'll round out the department heads. And really, in learning about them, the one thing I've taken away from them is you have a very professional staff, a very dedicated staff, and certainly a group that I'm proud to be a part of. So I'm looking forward to continuing to learn. I want to thank Mike. Mike's been fantastic to work with. And even Reno over there has showed up and led me through some of the economic development projects going on. But in all seriousness, a great group to work with so far, and I just want to thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. And we look forward to working with you as well. Counsel, we're going to move to appointments of boards and commissions, and we find ourselves in need of somebody for the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Mr. David Greer has resigned his position, and his term expires 12/31/2024. This is a professional appointment. This is a professional appointment in regards to needs for an architect. So we will work with staff to fill that position. If you have suggestions, feel free to make those suggestions either to myself or to Ms. Duncan, and she will forward those to the appropriate folks as we move to find somebody to fill that position on the Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Mr. Mayor, is that a professional appointment? Is this position, is it a design professional? What are we looking for?
It is an architect position specifically.
Specifically?
Yeah.
And Mr. Self, correct me if I'm wrong, we have typically tried to find someone who is a resident of Greer, but I think in the past, due to maybe some restriction in regards to finding somebody, we've actually...
Is David Greer not restricted to just being a resident?
The practice possibly in Greer. Okay.
And David Greer, he was not a resident.
Right.
But he did a really good job for us, though.
Yeah. It is a professional position, so we do need an architect for this position. Thank you, sir. Counsel, let's move on to items of old business this evening, of which we've got a number, as you are well aware if you've looked at your agenda this evening. I think that I have corrected, for the most part, my sins of the past meetings where I failed to recognize some people on first reading, but I think we caught all of those on second reading last time. So I believe we're back to neutral in that regard. But we'll see as we go along here. If a question arises, we will entertain information from a property owner or representative of a property owner if we run across that situation. We have Mr. Matt Mahan joining us this evening, and we will start with the second and final reading of ordinance number 11-2020. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by James Burns, located at 286 Nature Trail Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of R-20% property. Mr. Matt Mahan, does this come with any new or additional information?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Counsel. A public hearing was held on April 20th. The applicant requested to hold this until they were get closer to their closing time. They have closed on the property. Planning Commission did make a recommendation to approve the R-20 zoning. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
For clarification, I'm sorry, I, they've asked to hold this...
They had asked to hold to come back for second. That's why this one originally came to you back in March. That's why there was such a lag in this one.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. For the purpose and intent of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Sir.
Say.
And a second.
So they're wanting to hold it now, or they wanted to hold it?
They wanted to hold. I just, I figured if y'all hadn't seen this one since it's number 11 and we're on, in the 40s now, I figured y'all might have that question, so I wanted to kind of clarify that first.
Did they ever do a traffic study or the highway department? My understanding that's very narrow. Nature Trail is very narrow.
It is a narrow road. This is a county road, so they will have to get an encroachment permit from the county, and I believe they are working on that right now. They have submitted a preliminary plan. It's roughly 86 lots, over 39 acres. We have, we'll have a PAC meeting the 27th for this project to go over all those requirements.
That 86, does that include, I know there's several here on Abner Creek. Does that include all the others, or is that separate?
The ordinance 11 and 12, those are, those are the Nature Trail ones, those are the 86 lots. The Abner Creek project that we discussed in the previous meeting, that one has kind of fallen through, but they're still requesting to go forward with the rezoning.
It may be appropriate in this, in this regard, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening by show of hand, is there anything that you'd like to add to this discussion or in terms of additional information or anything you might want to add?
Not really at this time. We will, you know, do whatever recommendations we're required from the City of Greer, whether we need to...
Thank you. We appreciate it. Others? Questions? Discussion? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we'll move to the second and final reading of ordinance number 12-2020. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by James Benjamin and Evelyn Burns, located at 282 Nature Trail Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of R-20% property. Mr. Matt Mahan?
Yes, sir. A public hearing was also held for this one on April 20th, and Planning Commission did make the recommendation for the R-20 zoning. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Got interest in both pieces, I see.
It's the same development for both pieces.
Indeed. Thank you for being here this evening. Counsel, any additional questions or discussion in this regard?
I just wanted to note on this particular item, ordinance here, how many is proposed for that?
So the ordinance 11 and ordinance 12 will be combined when they do their subdivision. So the total of 11 and 12 is roughly 39 acres, and it's going to be 86 lots.
Hey, okay. So those two include the acres?
Yes, ma'am.
So this comes to R. Quinn? You said this still has to come to R.?
This will come to our PAC meeting on August 27th. Yes, sir. And then we'll go to Planning Commission for preliminary approval in September.
All right. Others? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to the second and final reading of ordinance 31-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Mary Green, located at 551 Abner Creek Road from R-12 to RM1. Mr. Matt Mahan?
No, sir. There is no new information for this one.
No new or additional information in that regard? In that case, I will entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Say.
Floor is open for discussion.
Now, is that part also? But the other, I noticed since it's 551, the others are 200 block, but is it still part of the same?
That development has fallen through. They are not going to proceed with that. But what, what their intent was, was to get the property rezoned, to see if they would even be able to make that project happen. The owner of the property and the buyer could not come to an agreement. So the property owner is still requesting to continue with the rezoning in hopes to continue talks down the road.
And how many homes were that, I mean, what?
They were looking at doing an apartment, they were doing, looking at doing an apartment complex for that site, but with RM1, they could do single-family also.
I think in regards to your question, if I'm not mistaken, this project is not, is not part of the other two projects we...
This is not. This is on Abner Creek, closer to the Ledges property.
Other side of the creek.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
They're all in the same area. Yes, ma'am.
I knew they were.
Yeah. Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to ordinance number 32-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Ben Diller, located at 531 Abner Creek, from R-12, single-family residential, to RM1. Mr. Matt Mahan, any new or additional information in that regard?
No, sir. There is no new or additional information at this time.
Mr. Diller does not join us this evening. I haven't seen Mr. Diller in a number of years. I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second.
Say.
Time. Got a motion and a second. Any additional conversation or discussion in regards to ordinance 32-2020?
Do these two combined make one? Originally was one project.
That was their original intent, was to combine those. Yes, sir.
Got you.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move on to the second and final reading of ordinance number 34-2020. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Red Dragonfly LLC, located at 1111 Poplar Drive Extension by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of R-5, which is Garden Quarter Patio Home for said property. Mr. Matt Mahan, new or additional information in that regard?
Yes, sir. A public hearing was held on July 20th for the zoning of the property. Planning Commission did make a recommendation of approval of the R-5 patio home zoning. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, sir.
Entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion? So moved.
Say.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
You said the Planning Commission agreed, or did they make another recommendation?
They made a recommendation to approve, requested. Yes, sir.
Others? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we find ourselves at item F, which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 37-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Margarita Hewitt, located at 2921 Brushy Creek Road, from DRD, which is Design Review, to R-12. Mr. Merriman is, that is not the item that you have in...
Item F, new business.
Item F in new business. Thank you, sir. Counsel, excuse me, I had my Fs mixed up. Counsel, let's start again. Second and final reading of ordinance number 37-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Margarita Hewitt, located at 2921 Brushy Creek Road, from DRD to R-12. Mr. Matt Mahan, new or additional information in that regard?
No, sir. There is no new or additional information at this time.
I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Say. And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Second and final reading of ordinance number 39-2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a portion of property owned by OZF LLC, located at South Beverly Lane, from R-12 to RM2. Mr. Matt Mahan, any new or additional information in that regard?
No, sir. There is no new or additional information at this time.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Say.
Motion and second. Floor is open for discussion.
Is this the site they were trying to build the duplex on?
Yes, sir. This is the site they were wanting to do that duplex on. The property along Clayton will still remain single-family.
Others? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, the last item of old business, this is the second and final reading of ordinance number 40-2020. This is an ordinance approving a major change to a design review district of certain real property in the City of Greer related to the South Main Towns home development. We had a lengthy discussion in that regard. Anything new to add or update in that regard? Mr. Matt Mahan?
No, sir. There is no new additional information at this time.
Comes then. With no new or additional information, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Floor is open for discussion.
Just for my clarification, one of the slides that was shown last week, it was shown in connection with discussion about total number of lots. And then there was a comment made, but when we add this, it's 121 lots. And it, and I'm probably confused, but it looked like they were looking to add to that development.
No, sir. They weren't. That gentleman misspoke. It's the original 92 that was approved. The way they did that one is originally, there was that brick house with the pool that was there at the corner. They weren't able to obtain that when they first came before you, and then they obtained that. So that's kind of why that one area was kind of hashed out. He completely misspoke on that last week. It is still only allowed to have 92 lots, not the 121.
And they're not looking at adding on that back corner.
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
Others? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Counsel, let's move to items of new business, the first of which is a bid summary for our fire truck, fire department extrication equipment. Fire department has worked to evaluate their current extrication equipment, and the department needs, as they move forward, staff has various recommendations to make to us this evening. Josh Holzheimer joins us for that discussion. The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. We come before you tonight asking permission to purchase extrication equipment. This purchase was a budgeted item, and the recommended vendor price is below budget. Spartan Fire and Emergency Apparatus is the sole source vendor for Homatro Rescue Tools. I will be happy to answer any further questions you may have.
Counsel? Josh, you may want to give a, excuse me, Mr. Holzheimer, you may want to give an overview of what has precipitated this.
Yes, sir.
We are, we have taken possession of a new ladder truck and a beautiful piece of equipment. And so we are evaluating some of the new needs that we'll have. We'll be able to use some of the equipment that we've got there, but certainly as we redistribute and reevaluate some of that, we may want to look at replacing some. You may want to, you may want to talk about that a little further.
Yes, sir. And with technology changes, our current extrication set is, was purchased back in 2005, 2006 by FEMA grant, and that stuff is starting to age out, and the wear and tear is, they're non-reparable. So we've, we've tested other equipment out there now. And this will also give us a gas set on the ladder truck, which will be operated by, like a power motor, and the other is electric. The engines will carry an electric tool. So it's two spreaders for, one for each engine, and then two cutters and two rams, and then the extrication set on the ladder truck will be a complete set of, of gas-powered tools. Does that help clarify?
Does indeed. Counsel, that comes with a recommendation from staff. It fits their current budget. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Floor is open for discussion.
Josh, there's, there's only really two manufacturers of this extrication-type equipment, right?
There's, there's a few more out there now. They, they took, we've looked at Hurst, we've been a Hurst customer for a long time, and they just haven't kept up with the, the changes in times. The equipment's still as heavy as it was back in, in the early 2000s. Homatro is a German company, and it's, they've really, these tools are state-of-the-art now, and curvature and ergonomics and all that has really played a big part into it.
Maybe I'm the only one, but explain to me exactly what extrication equipment includes?
I can say this one word, you'll probably remember, the jaws of life.
Oh, okay.
You know, cut open a car and that kind of stuff to...
That's all this includes?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
For, for your knowledge, too, I did check with HGAC, the consortium that we used to buy the ladder truck and other, other departments have used, and it was on the, they would offer a 3% discount through that company right there because of the sole source for the state, so...
This is not just one tool, right?
No, sir. No, sir.
It's a, it's a power supply and, and the tools, it's to run off the power supplies.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Others? Questions? Comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we've got Mr. Holzheimer at the podium. We will consider a bid summary for medical equipment. The fire department has worked to improve the level of medical care provided to our community. We've worked hard to increase the number of paramedics on staff over the past three years and are now ready to move forward with awarding or providing advanced life support to citizens of Greer. You will see a request there for some additional medical equipment. Mr. Holzheimer, if you'll give us an overview of that, I would be appreciative, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We're, tonight, we're asking permission to purchase medical equipment that is, it was budgeted as well, and recommended for price is below budget, and it's Life Pac 15's monitors, which one may ask, well, why do you go with those? Well, the Life Pac 15 has a feature that allows it to be as a paramedic, it will allow me to use it as a, as a paramedic, but it also allows an EMT to use as that, as an AED and all the functions of it at that feature. It has a security code. You can put your password in, unlock it for, for a paramedic to use. And it, that is, I'll be glad to answer any further questions.
What's the AED?
The AED, the Automatic Exterment Defibrillator, there's some in the hallways here. That's what we have currently, and this, this would just allow us to act as a paramedic, and then, but it would still have that AED function if we're not there.
Counsel, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Say.
Have a motion and a second. Floor is now open for discussion or questions of Mr. Holzheimer. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?[1614.01]
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, you've not had a chance to go by yet and see that piece of equipment. It is in the barn, as they say. I believe we're going to have an official pushing-in ceremony at some time in the near future. Do you know that date yet?
No, sir, we do not. We're working to get everything put on it.
Okay. I believe part of the reason that we are just now dealing with this and already have the truck is the truck arrived a little earlier than we anticipated. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, join me, please, on the first reading of ordinance number forty-one dash twenty-twenty. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by CJN LLC located at two twenty B Street by one hundred percent petitioning to establish a zoning classification of R seven point five for said property. Mr. Matt Mahan joins us for that discussion.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. As you stated, this is a request to annex and zone the parcel on two twenty B Street to R seven point five. This is an aerial of the property. This will have contingency right here on two forty, two thirty, and two twenty J Street. That is the River Reserve subdivision that is currently under grading right now. This is the current zoning for the area. This is in Spartanburg, so there is no zoning within the county. Here's the future land use map. This is residential land use, too, but when we look at the lot size of the surrounding area in the Mill Village there, they are all roughly six to eight thousand square feet. This is an aerial view of the current property. The next ordinance that will come before you will be the other two pieces where you will see the house that's there with the carport and the next lot over. That is in ordinance forty-two. And that's all the information that I have, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, show a hand. Is the owner of the property a representative, the owner of the property with us this evening? Records will indicate nobody indicated, so entertain a motion for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions of Mr. Matt Mahan? Comments?
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we have the first reading of ordinance number forty-three dash twenty-twenty. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a portion of properties owned by Honeywell International LLC located at eighty-five and eighty-seven Bico Road and South Buncombe Road by one hundred percent petitioning to establish a zoning classification of I-1 for said property. Mr. Matt Mahan?
If I may, Mayor, I believe we skipped over forty-two.
We skipped over forty-two dash twenty-twenty. There's two parcels on this B Street rezoning. You went straight to E.
All right.
I did that intentionally to see if you'd catch it.
First test.
Maybe made me look good.
Hey, we've done worse things than that. We've gone back and picked up some that I've left away behind, so. Well, let's try the first reading of ordinance number forty-two dash twenty-twenty. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Crown Properties located at LLC, I mean, excuse me, by Crown Properties LLC located at two ten and two hundred B Street by one hundred percent petitioning to establish a zoning classification of R seven point five. Mr. Matt Mahan, as you explained, this is a adjoining piece of property, I believe. Any additional information in that regard?
No, sir. I have the aerial right here. If y'all'd like to look, it's those two end properties that we were discussing in the previous ordinance, pretty much the same aerials. This will go to Planning Commission on the seventeenth for a public hearing, and we will bring that back to you at your last meeting in August.
To further the discussion, do I hear a motion to receive?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Floor is open for discussion.
Brandon, will you go back one slide? Where's the contingency?
So on the previous ordinance?
Okay.
We're jumping right there, and then we, yes, sir.
Are they going to be on sewer here?
They will be on sewer. That's one of the issues they're having with redeveloping that, those three lots.
Is it just out in the middle of the road right here? Is that how they're going to connect?
They just ran sewer to the site right here. That's already in the city for the development that's going there, and they're just going to connect to the road along B Street, I believe.
Is there a good chance there's going to be a lot more redevelopment?
I would say in conversations with the property owner of these three, I would say yes.
Isn't that, is that strip, is that where the silver lining is?
Yes, sir.
That run directly to Rewa or whatever we call it now?
I believe this does run to Rewa. I don't believe it runs to Maple Creek.
Right.
Is this district two?
Three.
Three?
Abner Creek here, I believe it's three.
Okay. This is, this doesn't front on fourteen, does it?
It's about two blocks back off of fourteen.
The whole, um, Melville.
We have a motion and a second on that, Ms. Duncan. Any additional conversation in that regard? Any further questions or comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. All right, let's try the first reading of ordinance number forty-three dash twenty-twenty. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a portion of property owned by Honeywell International LLC located at eighty-five and eighty-seven Bico Road and South Buncombe Road by one hundred percent petitioning to establish a zoning classification of I-1 for said properties. Mr. Matt Mahan, information in that regard, sir?
Yes, sir. The applicant is requesting to annex a ten-foot strip along Buncombe Road from their existing building at the corner of Buncombe and Subur. It's kind of a funky line, but it's going to go kind of down Su, or down South Buncombe, around their property line, back to Bico Road. There are two parcels on Bico that they are wanting to annex in. This will go to Planning Commission on the seventeenth for a public hearing. The reason for this request is their sewer line connecting to the main Honeywell site also connects to this. Their hopes is to sell the property on Bico Road, so to do that, they would want to disconnect that sewer, and to connect a sewer, they have to have annexation into the city.
Uh, Chauvin is the owner of the property, representative of the owner of the property with us this evening. Anything that you would like to add to that discussion, please, sir? Thank you. Mr. Deaton, any information that you want to provide in that regard on this particular project? All right, thank you. Entertain a motion to receive?
So moved.
And a second. We have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions?
Is all of this property that we're, with the strip that's on by Honeywell?
Yes, sir.
Additional questions? Comments?
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, as you are aware, first reading of ordinance number forty-four dash twenty-twenty, which is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding regarding conveyance of an easement in certain real property in the city of Greer, that will come to us for a request to hold over, if I am correct. Mr. Mayorman?
That is right. We don't have a date for that, but it has been effectively withdrawn. So when the time is right and the applicant likes it, we'll bring it back to your consideration.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to item G, the first of which is the first and final reading of Resolution twenty-four twenty-twenty. This is a resolution certifying certain real properties in the city of Greer as an abandoned building site. Mr. Deaton joins us for this conversation, and I believe I saw Mr. Hill as well come in, so he is here as well, too. Mr. Deaton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Good evening. Reno Deaton with the Greer Development Corporation. If I could approach, I've got a handout that might help us in discussion.
Please.
I know that, Mayor and Counsel, you've seen a lot of requests basically for abandoned building designation, so I just wanted to refresh your recollection first and foremost about, at least my best in layman's terms, as to what that provision asks you to do. It says, it gives you the ability for a building that at least two-thirds of which has not been used for essentially productive activity for a five-year period, to designate it as abandoned, and that then provides a developer the opportunity to receive, in this case, an income tax credit, to help us with redevelopment. The packet that I provided for you this evening, I think I've left enough. The first page you see here is sort of a footprint of the Parkview Greer project. It's the area bounded by North Main Street, Jason, and Cannon Streets. The second page there from our project agreement shows you both the buildings that are currently on-site and the footprint of what those new buildings will look like once they're finished. The red-hatched buildings, the existing buildings, those are the ones for which the request comes to you this evening, designate as abandoned as part of this request. I've then included for you a street view of each of those buildings. There are a lot of different property numbers, but the addresses essentially are two oh four North Main Street, two oh eight North Main Street, two seventeen Cannon Street, two twenty-one Cannon Street, two twenty-seven Cannon Street, and two thirty-one Cannon Street. And as the mayor indicated, I'm pleased to introduce Eads, our developer. He's brought his team here this evening to answer any questions you might have, in particular about these properties and this request.
Mr. Eads, thank you for joining us this evening. You slipped in on me. I didn't see you back there. Welcome, sir. Would there be anything that you'd like to add to the conversation this evening?
I think that Reno's going to like, uh, questions, he's going to have to answer questions, and Representative Park, uh, we can, well, I guess, Chris Daly will answer these specific questions about the tax credits.
Thank you for joining us as well, then. Thank you. With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive?
No motion.
And a second, so that the floor is open for discussion.
Second.
I think we had a second.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah. Quiet second.
You know me.
That's Mark's.
You know me.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions of Mr. Deaton? Need for additional information? So all of these pictures of buildings you're giving us here, we are voting to make them designated abandoned buildings?
That's correct.
And they all meet the criteria?
The request from you this evening is to designate them as abandoned. As part of your packet, the developer has obtained affidavits from the property owners relative to those requests, but they're here this evening, and certainly any questions you have about qualification or the statute itself should probably be directed to those folks.
How does two oh eight qualify? Two oh eight North Main?
Let me direct that again to the team of Parkview Greer.
Mr. Pugh, Mr. Hill, Mr. Eads, do any of you want to address that?
The last?
Y'all mutual sales, Bill.
Well, it was the last, I think Amazing Threads occupied that.
Amazing Threads, last.
It was Piedmont Fields. Yeah, the bottom's been empty for years.
So it has two floors? I got you. Yeah. That building, that's a two-story building. The bottom floor of that building's been empty for years, and I think the Amazing Threads only occupied a portion of the top floor, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Mr. Hill? So going with what Mr. Deaton said earlier, if more than two-thirds of the building is empty or vacant, or, we have a lot of people that just use it for storage, for storing old records, and that's not productive use, right? So two-thirds of that building is underground? Is the bottom floor? It's two floors, but they're saying that some of the second floor might have somebody using it. I don't think it's underground, is it?
But there is a basement underneath that.
A basement. So two-thirds of the building has to have been non-income producing for five years, right? Correct. So the basement is two-thirds of that building?
Not all the first floor has been used?
My understanding is the provision is that two-thirds of the building is not being used for business purposes based on the total square footage.
So they didn't use the entire top floor?
I can't speak to that.
No, there's a portion of the top floor that where Amazing Threads is, but they don't occupy the entire top floor unless they have some storage in the back that primary use, I think, if I'm not mistaken, of Amazing Threads is located in that front section. The last use of the bottom part of the building was used primarily by Mr. T.L. Aubrey for storage at one point in time for a company he had that sold some sort of product, but that's been years ago. So I don't have any idea what the square footage of the bottom part of that building is. That's where there was an office and storage in there, and then whatever is on the top. So I think that's probably where the calculation comes from.
So we have an affidavit on two oh eight North Main? Well, I don't mean split hairs, and God knows the best use of that building is rubble, but I do know that this has come for us before, and it hasn't been so, and it was withdrawn because of that. I'd just like to make sure that we do indeed meet the standards for that designation before we pass that.
That'd be my concern as well. I know we, just by driving by, you know, the building was used, but I can't, I can't say, I guess that we have to hang our hat on the affidavit. Is that correct, Reno? Is that how, the intent of this law?
Really, all I can offer in that regard is, I know that your attorney, Mike Quizlarik, drafts this resolution. You'll notice there, it says, whereas based solely on the representation of the affidavits, specifically so that we're not in a position where we're performing due diligence to determine whether or not it meets the standard, and deferring instead to relying upon sworn affidavits that are provided to you for consideration. I think, and I'd be paraphrasing, of course, your counsel's advice, but that puts essentially any responsibility later on down the line, not on the city, but on those sort of squares of the affidavit and the developer, should for any reason there be some sort of termination that didn't qualify after your designation.
So which one of these affidavits is for two oh eight North Main?
I believe that's the first one, that is the Greer Partners.
They would be Mr. Stubbs, Greer Partners. They're specifying several tax parcel numbers there on that particular affidavit. Because they own two oh four and two oh eight.
Yes, sir.
I think this is very similar to the Mutual Home case that we had, and I think it's, the debate is the same, is that we don't have any knowledge of what portion of the buildings are operating a business and which portions aren't. And so if you say that we can rely on the affidavit, then I think that's really all we have to go on, because I have to include.
So that first affidavit is actually one, two, three, four, five different parcels, right? According to the top of it. So they're taking sixty-six percent of those five combined? Now, each individual? Each one has to be sixty-six percent abandoned?
Okay. And, Mr. Dumas, it wouldn't be my place to suggest on which what counsel should rely in making this decision. We've taken the position that in order to do our own due diligence on requests like these, the time and the cost would be such that it'd be tough for us to do. And so counsel, Mike Quizlarik in this case, has drawn up these resolutions requesting an affidavit of those petitioners to give you some evidentiary proof of that request.
I would request that in the future that we, I understand this is based on a sworn affidavit for someone, the sellers of the property, I guess, and that's all. And that technically it should, it would be between the state, the seller, and the buyer who is applying for the tax credits if there's something that the state deems incorrect.
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
However, because we are required to give our blessing, I mean, it's a resolution, which is one of the weakest things that we can do. I would still like to have a little bit, you know, for this building, and if it has six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five square feet, and if it had, what would it be, thirty-three, fourteen, something and a half in the basement, then, okay, we know that. And then, okay, however much was for storage up top, that would just be, that would make life a lot simpler for me.
Yes, sir. My apologies for not more, for not providing more information this evening. Certainly in the future, we'll be sure to review our due diligence process and try to gather additional information for you in the future.
I agree with that, because I'll bet you a dollar that when you send this to the state, they don't look any further than that, than an affidavit. They don't know if they're getting the right information or not. They're not going to spend time, just like you're not going to spend time. So I'd like in the future to have a little bit more to go on.
Certainly, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's like the state's almost saying, well, this is, it's a local development.
Yeah.
Uh, we're relying on the local folks to verify that it's correct.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I think the, I think the intent is certainly to have us at least verify in some regard that 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 the developer is not faulting the law and taking a building that has been or is in active use and that would be something that we might know. Whether or not sixty-six percent of the building is 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 been occupied or not occupied becomes a little bit irrelevant in 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 terms of that intent because basically all they're asking us to do is verify that some some portion of this, uh, two-thirds of it, um, has has not been in use and and we know that, at least in this particular case, that the end use is gonna be, the building's gonna be taken down regardless. No, I understand and I, not even talking about this project, but just in gen- if we have a relationship with all the folks, all parties and and we know, uh, that that their intent is all above board, but there will be times I'm sure that there's gonna be, uh, players in in in, uh, projects that come that we have no knowledge of. And I think that it's, I I think that it's part of my duty to say, okay, are we going or what we're signing off on is correct, although it's, you know, it's it is a resolution, it just says that we agree with it, but, uh, have we done enough to say?
Battle like that?
Yeah.
Others? Any additional comments in that regard? Questions? Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Dan.
Yes.
Counsel? We do not have any matters for executive session this evening. Having none, we stand adjourned.